Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year to you all. Thank you for being here tonight. We're here for our work session tonight, UDO. And you're going to hear, yeah, the UDO, and you're going to hear a lot of that going around, Unified Development Ordinances. So we're going to open up with a word of prayer, and then we're going to turn it over to Mr. Cooper and his team, and we'll get going. Father, let's pray together. Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for allowing us to be here, Father. We pray now, God, that you open our hearts and our mind, give us understanding, let us do the business for your county, in your Son. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start by saying Happy New Year to everyone here tonight. And we were going to move forward with this work session. I'm going to ask that Ms. Shayna Applewhite come to the podium, and she will introduce Mr. Brian Mayberry and Ms. Rachel Booth regarding the work session tonight. And during this work session, they'll talk about the review and analysis that they conducted in July. They'll also talk about the public outreach initiatives that they conducted in September as well, and also current times in looking at the ordinance drafting. So I'll yield to Ms. Applewhite at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year to everyone. And this evening, we are, as Mr. Cooper said, we are going to provide an update to the board on our UDO. Today's presentation would be, they're going to discuss some of the proposed changes they're looking at, like an outline of, you know, some of the areas that they'll intend to work on. And today I have with me from Candy Keys, the team today are from our consultants. We have Mr. Brian Mayberry and Mr. Rachel Booth. And I'll go ahead and invite them up now to begin the presentation, and I will be available for any questions along with both of them.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having us here. Brian Mayberry, as Shayna said, proud to be helping you all out on this project. Rachel and I are here today and tomorrow. We've already spoken to staff and given a very similar presentation, a lot longer and a lot more boring, though, I can promise you, as far as the content and the getting into the details. I'm getting and giving you all very high-level content, I think. You, I believe, have the full presentation in your packet if you want to see more details, and this hits the higher-level details. Tomorrow, we will be talking with the steering committee that's part of this project, as well as having an open-door, open-house type meeting. And it's in this building, I believe. I don't know if it's in this room, but it's in the, okay, it's in this room even, tomorrow evening. So just going to go over some of the project goals, refresh you on what a unified development ordinance is, take a quick look at our schedule, just talk about some input we've had thus far, get into the actual assessment content or the highlights of it, and then talk next steps and answer any questions that you might have. So just some overall goals, just in some reminders. The Unified Development Ordinance is the primary regulatory tool that the county has and that most other cities and counties have in the country to implement their comprehensive plan. You have a new comprehensive plan that our partners in this project, GMC, worked on a couple years ago, and the plan sort of lays out the vision for how the county wants to grow in the future at the policy level. The UDO is an adopted legal document that can make those wishes and policies in the comprehensive plan more of a reality. So that's an important, it's an important tool for making your comprehensive plan more of a reality. Wanting your, the new UDO to have predictability built within it so that applicants, when they're submitting an application for a rezoning or a variance, or whatever the case may be, know what they have to do, the guidelines and the standards are clear that they have to meet, and if they meet them, then they have a higher chance of approval than if they didn't meet them. Also predictability for neighbors and surrounding property owners. When some kind of development activity is taking place nearby or next door, they can have a better idea of what's going to take place there due to having a clear and concise unified development ordinance. Making all your development regulations work together. You've kind of, you've got a very long unified development ordinance. It'll probably still be pretty long by the time we're done with it, but it needs to definitely sort of mesh with itself and have, look like it's written in a consistent style with consistent wording, not using inconsistent terms for what's supposed to be the same thing, because that can only create confusion for everyone involved, whether it's an applicant or staff trying to enforce it or anything like that. Our firm has been around since 1982, and we've picked up a lot of best practices along the way and things we think work well, and we want to bring that to this unified development ordinance. And that's kind of speaks to the fourth bullet on the screen there of bringing best practices into the document, contemporary, you know, practices. Consolidating your development regulations. You've got a Chapter 1 and a Chapter 2 that deal with zoning, and the other one dealing with like development regulations and plating. Bringing those together into a single unified document, removing inconsistencies, and that kind of thing is a big part of this project. And then having user-friendliness is what most places are looking for, making it so that the average person can understand this document, that it has a good deal of graphics and tables, and is still legally defensible but isn't, doesn't take an attorney to understand. And so that's the things we're shooting for in this project. UDO standards. So a unified development ordinance is sort of a one-stop shop for various development-related regulations. It deals with what you see on the screen, your base zoning districts, just the regular zoning districts that aren't overlays, and the rules that go along with that, such as the dimensional standards, like setbacks and lot widths and lot areas. Overlay districts, which you have a good amount of, those are included in this. Permitted uses, uses that are allowed or not allowed or require a conditional use permit in various zoning districts are addressed in the UDO. Building envelope, so building height and setbacks and open space standards are part of this. Standards related to tree preservation, lighting, signs, parking, all of those things are part of this as well. The process for how different procedures or applications are either approved or denied, what, who looks at them, who takes final action, what the appeal authority is, how long it takes, those kind of steps are all part of this as well. And then other, there's a whole, a lot of other things. Enforcement, definitions, grandfathering are all part of what a UDO typically addresses. This is our schedule, and it looks like we're farther along probably than we actually are. There's still a lot of work to do. Really, we're kind of more mid-level, mid-point, but really month-wise, as far as it being January, that's where we are as far as like doing the actual ordinance drafting. That's what we're teed up to do now. We've, in the past, like in September on our first trip here, we had sort of a orientation to the county, did some reconnaissance with staff and on our own, too, had some stakeholder meetings, talked with focus groups, talked with staff, heard their, their wants and desires as far as what this project would, would end up with, and kind of got educated on Newton County. And so what we heard as we were, and who we talked to as we were back in September on our first trip here, on the left, you see several different people or types of people that we spoke with, ranging from, you know, county staff, like I said, business owners, private sector attorneys, design professionals, realtors, involved citizens. There were also our subconsultants. GMC did the district meetings, the open house meetings in each of the districts as well. And what you see on the right, I would say, and these aren't meant to line up with each other, it's not as if county staff, just because they're the first bullet, said that overdevelopment was, is a concern on the west side of the county. Those, they're not meant to tie across to each other. What we heard, and this is very much a summary of a summary, so we, we took raw notes, summarized them, maybe even summarized them again, and this is sort of the, the summary of that even. Sort of some highlights of concerns were like overdevelopment on the west side of the county. We heard that a lot from people. That's kind of a big-picture item, a smaller-picture item, narrower, too narrow of streets and townhouse and apartment development. So it's a very big picture and also a very small picture like that. There were concerns, or perceived concerns at least, about changes to applications without notice being given, and what kind of thresholds there are that need, that make that happen. And so that's something else we've heard, the need for both affordable housing and higher-end housing, need to better address or regulate private streets. Increases in density, we found, tend to be the big alarm for the public when it comes to showing up at public hearings, it seems. The community-oriented residential development process is perceived, at least, as giving away too much density to applicants without maybe getting something back in return as far as amenity space or open space. And then there were just a large list of staff, what I would call wish list items, that they had in mind that would make their jobs and their lives easier if they could have that, have these things worked into the UDO, because they can't enforce something that's not written in the UDO. So they have to go by what's in black and white in, in the book. So these are some of the things we heard as we, as we spoke with people in September. There are eight points to our full critique presentation that, again, I think is in your packet, and I'm just going to go over some of the higher-level points of those eight points. So aligning the, the new standards in the UDO with adopted plans. So as I said, your comprehensive plan lays out policy for how the county wants to grow and develop in the future, and then the UDO has the rules to make that a reality. So just some samples here, three samples from an 11-page matrix we did that took all of the land use and development-related recommendations from the comp plan and showed how the UDO could bring those, you know, to reality. So one was having a variety of safe and affordable housing types and densities for all income levels and lifestyles. So these are, if not quotes, they're very close to quotes from the, the comprehensive plan recommendations. One thing the UDO can do to help make that sort of wish a reality is to allow for a wider variety of housing types instead of not addressing them, because again, they have to be in the, in the, in the book for staff to be able to interpret and enforce and regulate these things. So things like our housing types such as zero-outline or live-work buildings or cottage courts or tiny houses, those kind of things should be in the written part of the UDO so that there are rules that go along with them, so that when someone comes to Shayna's office and says they want to do this kind of new thing, and there's nothing in the, the UDO to guide, then she kind of has to say, "Well, we can't really do that, because we don't have any regulations to go by." So that's one way of, of bringing that more into reality. Ensuring that the small-town character of the county is maintained as much as possible with good design standards. So having mixed-use and non-residential design standards or improving upon what you do have already, you can do that by making buildings have more detail to them, sort of be at more pedestrian or human scale as opposed to more massive kinds of buildings that don't have much character to them. Modulating them, it's a word, fancy word for saying, making them sort of look smaller than they are, sort of in the front part, maybe they're bigger in the back but have a more detail in the front. Less obtrusive parking, kind of thinking of things that sort of make for a smaller-town character there, parking that's not as visible, that makes for a more walkable environment in some places so that a pedestrian isn't worried about, you know, cars exiting and entering a, a parking lot when they're walking along the street. Having compatibility for new non-residential development when it's near residential, you know, there's a lot of things that the UDO can do to help make that happen. And then the third one on there, reviewing the zoning code to ensure compliance and relevance with current development trends. There's just a lot of different trends in zoning that the UDO can address and take part in. Maybe some of them aren't, aren't right for Newton County right now, but parking reform is a big trend with what the work we do, where places don't want to require as much parking, that only gets used, you know, at max capacity, if, if even once a year on Black Friday, maybe not even that anymore. Having, treating home occupations a little differently with the internet and the lasting impacts of COVID. People have done their home occupations differently than they used to. Micro-manufacturing, there might be people who want to have a business of making like soap or leather goods or candles or things like that, where they're not a big manufacturing plant doing these things, they're just a one- or two-person business that just needs a small footprint. So accommodating those kind of things that we call micro-manufacturing is another thing that the new UDO could do, could address. With affordability, there's a, a lot that can be done, and I have some, there's some thoughts here on the, the slide. Allowing certain kinds of housing, especially maybe the more dense multifamily-style housing in the commercial zoning districts where there might be less pushback from surrounding property owners, because if it is a commercial area, then there's not going to likely be as many folks who might be against having that in close proximity to their, to their residences. Expanded use of accessory dwelling units or granny flats, those would be the smaller buildings that are, that could be either on top of a garage, on top of a detached garage, or a separate building that either a family member could live in, who might be elderly or a younger person could live in, or that, those kind of things that help with affordability and help the property owner pay their mortgage when they've got that little extra source of income coming in from their accessory dwelling unit. Cottage clusters or cottage courts are another thing that the UDO could have in it to help with affordability. I've got a couple of pictures on the bottom here. One is with the purple flowers sort of in the front, that's sort of a cottage court looking straightforward. Several, and then on the right is an illustration from another code we did that shows how that can look, where there's smaller houses that front on a common green area, a common amenity space. You know, wanting to have quality building design, that quality amenity space for those people that live there to enjoy, because they don't have their own yards, basically. They kind of share that common yard in the front. But we'd also want to emphasize, you know, maintaining where, where appropriate and where it already is or where it's planned to be. Single-family dwellings also, the viability of that, and not ruling them out in any case. Improvement on your land uses and use standards, just identifying new uses that have come along since your UDO was last updated, you know, like escape rooms as an example, or axe-throwing lounges, or these things that are new, cat, cat, day, cat cafes, things like that, that are, that come along that staff doesn't, may not know what to do with because it's not in the book. So what do they, how do they treat it? Where can they say it's allowed? Well, they either need to interpret it, or they say you can't do it. So we want to, don't, don't want to just tell people no right off the bat usually. So having those listed out would be helpful as well. And just treating uses in categories so that your use table, which is the long table in your current ordinance that has where all the different land uses are allowed and what zoning districts, streamlining that a little bit and, and making it a little easier to understand. It would look sort of like that, where you've got, you do both. You have both a use table and a listing of allowed uses, and that, we wouldn't want to do that, because those can conflict with each other if we're not careful, and just having one use table that handles everything is more sort of the way to go. And so we can make one that's, you know, easy to follow and, and looks good once it's all adopted and everything. Development and design opportunities. So there are some parts of the county that are going to be as suburban or rural as can be, but there are others, like in your, on your plan, your village centers that are the little stars on the, the character map, that might have a more pedestrian orientation where there's kind of more development activity or, or a focus of, of commercial activity or mixed-use activity. And so to make that happen, we'd want to have certain things in the UDO that, that allow for that, like maximum setback, like pulling the building closer to the sidewalk so that it's more of like a, a mini downtown or a new downtown where the, the buildings are close to the street, the parking's in the rear, there's sort of a pedestrian or human-scale design of the buildings. All of those things would be helpful in those areas, those activity centers and those village centers that are in your, in your comprehensive plan and on the, the character map. Preserving and enhancing your tree canopy would help also with the kind of small-town character, making sure that your, your tree canopy is preserved and enhanced as new development projects come along rather than cut away. And just trying to do all we can to make mixing of uses. And when I say mixing of uses, I mean, you know, residential and non-residential, either in the same building or at least in kind of close and coordinated proximity with each other. This is a very wordy slide, and I'm not going to go through it all, but mainly with your residential districts, a few things. Consider renaming them at least so that they're a little more intuitive about what the character of the district is, instead of like R1 or R2 or R3, having like suburban residential SR as like a name, or urban residential or rural residential, and those kind of terminologies that make it a little more understandable. Something we hear from people or that we've heard staff mention with, that they've run into, is the phenomenon of someone buying into a development and having a open area next door that's very natural and attractive and adds amenity and value to their experience living there in the community, but then, so they're kind of borrowing that open space like the top image shows. Then a new development comes along and that, you know, in their eyes ruins their view, but you know, that was a, either maybe the next phase of their own subdivision or some other property owner developed it and, you know, did another, you know, subdivision there as they're able to do. And then the property owners in the first subdivision are upset and call Shayna's office and have complaints, but there's really nothing that can be done. It was a, you know, able to be done on that property. And so the way to, a way, a way to help fix that is to have, you know, as much open space as you can get away with and get by with without penalizing the developer. So that bottom image there is sort of the happy, happy image where there are houses on lots that are built, but there's also a lot of preserved open space and amenities like trails or bike paths or what have you that, that maintain a sort of rural character or at least a really nice suburban character and allow people to enjoy the, the nature or the, the outdoors near their, their homes, but also allow the developer to get, you know, the kind of lot count and unit count that they need in order to stay in business. So we will be looking at, at ways to get as much open space as we can out of new developments so that if there is additional lots or additional density, it's offset by that, that open space that's permanent and set in perpetuity, as the attorneys say, for not being able to be developed in the future. A few more thoughts on non-residential districts. Again, that third bullet or that fourth bullet there, just looking at thresholds for public notice for certain changes in approved development plans. So if there are any, any gaps in the current UDO, we make sure that if there is some type of change in, in approved plan, that there's notice where there needs to be and who, and who needs to receive that. So yeah, I think I'll keep going as far as the districts go. Getting into procedures. So the other part of a UDO is the review procedures. I've kind of talked about the standards up until now. There's also the procedures for getting an application, you know, approved and acted on. We can build in a table, like similar to what you see there, and I know the wording is, is tiny, but basically what it shows is all the different applications, whether it's a sign permit or a variance or site plan or all these other things. It shows the, the timing of the submittal, like for a sign permit, for an example, you have to get a sign permit before you can put up a new sign. It shows, so that's the timing column. It shows if a pre-application conference with planning staff is needed or not, and for a sign permit, as our example, it would not be needed. Shows if public notice is needed or not and what kind, whether it's mailed notice or posted notice on the property or a newspaper notice. It shows who makes a recommendation on that particular application, who approves it, or who has final action, I should say, not necessarily approval, but whatever the final action is. It shows when it expires, in the case of a sign permit, two years. If, if no sign is ever built, you know, then that approval then expires after that two years. And then finally, there's a cross-reference to the sign standards for the sign permit example. So each of those rows represents a different application that has all of that information in it. And then it's, it's said once there, and it's not repeated later, because when you repeat things in a 500-page document, you're kind of bound to have little inconsistencies, and we don't want to, want to do that. So another thing that staff has been excited about is potentially having an administrative adjustment process that's sort of like an administrative variance, but it doesn't require the public hearing and public notice and the meeting and the additional paperwork that comes along with that. And instead, if there's like a 15% encroachment into a setback, you know, if there's a 10-foot setback and it's a, that, the math for that would work out to be about a two-and-a-half, I guess, foot encroachment by a building into that setback, that can be approved by staff under certain criteria, if it meets, lives up to certain criteria and standards. And then that saves that person from going through the, what can be a scary process of going before the zoning board of adjustment and trying to get a variance and then, you know, not knowing, you know, what's going on or what to do as an applicant. So that's one, one other thing as part of the review procedures that, you know, that we're looking at incorporating in. Then the final kind of section for this presentation is user-friendliness and legal compliance. We would, again, want to use plain English wording when we're drafting this document and organizing it in a logical manner, eliminate any internal inconsistencies we may find. And you can have a, just a really good UDO, but there still might be inconsistencies in it that we find as we're sort of reviewing it with a fresh set of eyes, and so we'll be looking out for that. Having an appendix in there that might have a plant list of plants that are acceptable plant species that can be changed as needs change and doesn't have to go through a formalized text amendment, because it's an appendix to the UDO. So keeping standards with standards and procedures with procedures instead of mixing the two, that's sort of just our style of doing things. So there's many things that are sort of legally and user-friendliness-related that, that we'll be doing. Making a better layout, more attractive document. This is just a, a view from another place that we've worked on that has, you know, extensive use of tables and graphics and other user-friendly features. And just some more illustrations and tables again. The final thing to discuss is just a, a pretty lengthy list of staff comments and staff wishes that, that I'll call out some random ones, just re-looking at the CORD issue and its flexibility, updating home occupation standards, build-to-rent developments where there's a one large parcel and there's individual houses on it, but it's really kind of a multifamily development, but, but they look sort of on the surface like single-family houses. Agrarian into industrial transitions, several other things, looking at land disturbance permits, major and minor plat clarification, working on the final plat, final action process, many different things. So we'll be drafting this document in two modules. The first module will be about the zoning districts and the land uses mostly, and the second one will be about the development standards, subdivision standards, and the review procedures that I talked about. Both will have definitions in them as a kind of aid to people reading it. And then I won't go through this, but this just shows the way the chapters are proposed to be organized in the UDO from, from Chapter 1 Administration on down to Chapter 12, word usage, which has several things in it, but mostly definitions. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that anyone might have or.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Lindsay?
Hello.
Hi.
I want to first start by thanking you for the presentation. I represent District 3.
I represent District Three, and I know that you've had a lot of people that have talked to you about the overgrowth in District Three. I am wondering why there has not been, I guess today, and maybe it comes, it comes later on, more of a presentation regarding how you're going to address the overgrowth in District Three. And if it wasn't in a presentation, do you have any ideas that you can share today, especially with the overlays?
Right. So yes, we did hear a lot about District Three and the overgrowth that was there. So one thing we would want to stay away from is, I would say, one eas, maybe easier fix is for the zoning districts that make up the area of District Three to not add more density to them. Because sometimes when we're writing the new districts, or tweaking the existing districts, we'll want to add more density to them in order to increase affordability. But that might not be the right solution. That probably is not the right solution for District Three to add more density to those districts. So we'll want to stay away from that. And as far as the overlays, you do have a, a lot of overlays that are somewhat complicated. And I'd have to, as we're drafting, get into more detail of those and see where they lay within District Three to make sure we're not inadvertently adding density to District Three. I mean, it could be that District Three gets its, and I'm, this is sort of brainstorming on my part, so, but gets its own districts that just set in, kind of set in stone the current density and not go any higher, to, to keep the development more at a lower level, or at, at least status quo level. And then there's also the, in, outside of District Three, which I know you're not asking about, but just having that trade-off of more density so that developers can still, you know, make a living and do, get, be in business and get some density off the land. But also, in exchange for that, have more open space set aside, that is permanently set aside so that there is, they're, they're, they can build in kind of concentrated areas, but the, the surroundings remain more in a rural, or natural, or at least kind of park-like state.
So at this point, are you just looking at not increasing the density? Are you entertaining at all a more restrictive zoning for the particular areas that we're referring to?
Right. For, for District, for the, the air, the districts that, the zoning districts that are in Council District, or Commissioner District Three, we would not want to add more density to those. And it might be that, that we have to sort of create a, a set of, of Commissioner District Three zoning districts that are more tied to that area, and that keep the density as it is, and not raise it. And I think, because you're wanting to avoid that, obviously, from what we're hearing from everyone.
Well, I think that we're trying to lessen the destiny, density in District Three.
Right.
So I want to make charm clear. I, I, and the only reason I'm asking is because I don't know. You know, I don't know what your proposal is. I know what people have said, I know what I've experienced. But what I'm looking for is what is the solution to addressing the overgrowth? And I would have thought that one of the solutions would have been something more restrictive, like a prohibition of multifamily housing in a particular area in the overlays, or a super overlay that overlaps what we already have, that's been, that's, I guess you're planning to modify, and make it more restrictive for that particular area.
Right. If we were to add an overlay, I guess one of the ones that would be a good candidate could be a District Three, like, we would call it something different, but a Commissioner District Three overlay that would, that could, like, the function of an overlay is to either remove uses that are available, or add uses. In this case, removing the ability to do like multifamily there. We could make the density numbers lower, but that sort of, you're, it's already built, so I don't know how much good that would do. But if it, if it, if it helps and we think through it, then we could definitely do that, where the, it might be, I, I don't know what the density is, but six units per acre, and instead the, the zoning, the, an overlay or something in that area makes it, you know, in the future, four, five, whatever the right number is.
Or two.
Yeah. Well, whatever we, whatever we figure out is, and we're getting input from you all and other stakeholders, you know, what the right number is.
Is there, based upon, I mean, because you're the professional in this. I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We, we have the most problems. All right. Yeah, but more so District Three and the overlays that we have. What about a serious restrictive zoning for the area? Is it permissible to have a particular area where there's absolutely no multifamily housing at all? Is that permissible?
I mean, there could be an overlay that, again, that could apply to the area that covers Commissioner District Three that prohibits multifamily. Yes, that's, that's.
And, and so if that's something that is permissible, and you've already heard all of the complaints about the overgrowth, and the traffic and everything else, can that be a priority that you put in your assessment as you go through this process? Because I would have thought that that kind of would have been glaring out from the presentation.
Yeah, so, and we did hear from several people who were concerned about that. We balance, you know, what we hear from, from the commission, from what we, what we hear from stakeholders, with what's in the comprehensive plan, with what staff thinks is good. So it's sort of balancing all these different things. But there's a very, a clear message from your district about density and overdevelopment so that kind of tips the scale more, you know, to what you're saying as opposed to what some of the other inputs we might be getting.
Well, this is my first meeting. I look forward to having more conversation with you. But one of the things that I probably am going to seriously push for is those restrictive covenants. And a super overlay that's going to prohibit certain multi-living housing, period, in the area. No apartments, no townhomes, no nothing in that area. That's what we need in that area. So maybe we can work together and talk more about making that a priority.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you for the presentation. I heard several times from you, I'm kind of like District Three, I'm in District Five. The developers, the developers. Well, this, this county sent a message loud and clear to this board that we want, they want us working for them, not the developers. They want us working for the people that live here now, not the people that are coming. Now, there is a balance there, I understand that. Okay, I am in the real estate business, I get both sides of it. However, what I'm not hearing from y'all, that I want to hear also, is, is that balance, how we get that balance. And, you know, I've been, I went to every one of the meetings that we had. I actually served on the committees until, until, as of this week, when they took me off because I'm a commissioner now. But I want to make sure that we're, we're, we're doing what, what we want, what the citizens are asking for, what they're screaming about. I mean, District Three's full, well, the rest of us have other things going on too. And I understand there is a balance. I'm not trying to sit here and say, you know, don't do your job. I don't want to see general stuff. I don't want to see, pay for all this money, and then have this book come back and it be so general. I think there were some mistakes made when we did the comprehensive plan. I think that we, commissioners woke up and said, what is this? What are all these villages, and what are all these stars on this thing? That's not what the people said. That's not what they asked for when they went to the meeting. So somehow they got missed. So I just want to make sure, I mean, I, I printed the entire book. I've been going through this. I mean, I don't have a life, so I've been going through this whole thing. And I'm writing, making notes left and right of things that we need to make sure that we do a good job on. And, and I've communicated those to, to Shana and to other people. But that's just something I want to make sure that we're just not doing a generic blanket of, of being, there are some, some great things that you can do with different types of community. I, I saw one last week, I was up in Watkinsville, went to the wire, and I love that. So there are places for those things, and some things where we can do some upscale developments like that, and have tighter housing. But it's not all over the county. So, and the middle housing is, that's one of my statements, the middle housing is missing. But middle housing does not mean that we have to be on top of each other either. So that's, those are, that's my two cents to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. C. The question I have, like, I guess I want to direct it to Patrick, because I can remember, maybe Patrick or either the county manager, either can, can maybe address this question I'm going to ask. We would have, we would go into meetings and we would talk about, and whatever we did is, in most of the zoning, it had to be some blanket, it had to be for each district. Say if you put a, a, a two-acre minimum, it had to be adopted by all the district rather than just one portion of one district. And so I, I guess my question is to Patrick, because he often reminded, I mean, I guess me or us, of that. So are we changing? How are we, how are we looking at changing it? And is this, can we look at each district separately, separately now? Or are we going to go back and, and start just saying, we have this in one district, we have this in another district? So how are we, I mean, kind of give me a little bit of, legally, is what we're looking at now?
Yes, so your zoning map looks at every piece of property in the unincorporated area of the county. It doesn't necessarily care about where district lines are. So you can have different zoning regulations applicable to different pieces of property throughout the county. I would recommend against focusing on the districts, but instead focusing on where different regulations make most, most sense. So you could, so I think to answer your question, yes. You could have a different set of zoning categories that live in District Two than, and there could be a different set that live in District Three, a different set that live in District Four. But that's hopefully going, going to be a function, not of the district lines, but of where different development patterns make sense.
Yeah, it can get confusing when you're saying, like, when we're, and I'm guilty of it. I tried to correct myself a few times, but there's the Commissioner districts and the zoning districts, which don't necessarily, you know, zoning, the Commissioner districts are much larger than a, than a given zoning district.
If I could just, maybe chime in just one more time, it's just to see me a little art that in unincorporated District Four, that there was a two-acre minimum. And, you know, it wasn't, in my opinion, a whole lot of growth. And so, you know, don't mind change, change is good. But, you know, I, I think we need to sit down and take them, just look at it with a microscope. And, and see what we, we can do rather than, because I remember it passed last time, two-acre minimum. It passed by, I think, the whole commission, because we were guided by the, by the county attorney. And he was telling us, Patrick was telling us that we had to implement that. And that was all, I just remembered it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, and thank you for the presentation, by the way. I, I, I want to ask you, is the presentation tonight, will it be the same presentation tomorrow night for the, for the, for the public?
Yes, it's not shorter, but likely to be 99% the same.
Okay. Well, I'll look, I certainly look forward to your first, the first draft we get to.
Yes.
Throw darts at, so. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, for sure. I echo some of my colleagues. When we look at where we currently are, I can say, I believe, in previous boards, maybe the objective that we're trying to move towards now wasn't the case previously. So previous boards did look at districts, they did look at size of the county. And so what that has done, it has truly put our county and our community out of balance. And so I think now what the, the objective is, is to say, as one of my colleagues stated, balance, I think that should be the key. How do we now balance the actual entire county versus saying we're going to not only restrict areas that we should, but also restrict areas that we shouldn't? And so we don't want to get into a place where we're restricting areas that we shouldn't restrict because we know that growth is going to happen. And so what we have to do is, and I've mentioned this so many times, that we've got to look at what we call smart growth. And we've got to say, okay, as this board, we've got to look at the entire county as a whole and say, if we're going to grow, where does that grow lie? And where do we actually allow that additional growth versus saying, we're just going to stop all growth altogether? Because when you're not growing, you're dying. And so I want to put that out there. There's a lot of people that really want to move to this county because it's an amazing county. And so we just got to figure out how we balance it, and how we balance, not only from a, from a residential perspective, but how do we balance residential versus commercial, residential versus industrial? And so I think we want to look at all of that. And so I'm with my colleagues, I'm looking at, looking forward to the first draft to see, you know, how we can throw some darts at it and make it, you know, what we think that this county is going to be, enhance the quality of lives for the community as a whole. So thank you once again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Shana, I do want to recommend that you and your team reach out to each commissioner and get their feedback. Because I think it'll save a lot of time, instead of throwing a lot of darts at a, you know. But if you, if you get, if you're able to reach out to them and set up time to meet with them and kind of hear from them, I think it eliminates a lot of dart throwing. I think that's what they called it, yeah.
We will. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Cooper?
That concludes the presentation, sir.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Thank you. Well, we stand adjourned. We'll go back into our regular scheduled meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you so much.